Yadira E. Barrera, que parecía que antes tenía sus firsts.
Yes.
De ellos no se han hecho.
You want candy?
Your energy, your...
That is, you want to tell this before we start?
May I have your attention, please? Good evening, Roma ISD family and guests. We're about to start this meeting. It is now 6:00 PM. And I call this public meeting to discuss budget and proposed tax rate for 2025, 2026, and regular monthly meeting of the Roma Independent School District Board of Trustees being held this Wednesday, August 27, 2025, to order. Let the record show that this meeting was duly posted according to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Agenda item number one is roll call. Board Vice President, Mrs. Yadira E. Barrera, absent. Board Secretary, Mrs. Mary Lou G. Cruz.
Here.
Board Member, Mr. Jaime Escobar Senior.
Present.
Board Member, Mr. Eby Garza Junior.
Here.
Board Member, Mrs. Karina Mascorro.
Here.
Board Member, Mr. Jesús Rios Junior.
Here.
And myself, Board President, Mr. Ricardo A. Pérez, present. Let the record show, we have a quorum in attendance at this, at this public meeting and regular monthly meeting. Agenda items number two and three are the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Ladies and gentlemen in the audience, the invocation this evening will be delivered by trustee, Mrs. Karina Mascorro, and the pledge will be led by trustee, Mr. Jaime Escobar Senior. Would everyone please stand?
Good evening. I would like for, to ask for a moment of silence for the tragedy that occurred this morning at the Minnesota Catholic School. Thank you. As we begin this new school year, let us focus on hearts and minds on the students we are here to serve. May our discussions and decisions tonight reflect our commitment to their growth, their safety, and their success. Let us work together with respect, wisdom, and unity to create opportunities where every Roma ISD student can thrive. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Mascorro and Mr. Escobar. We'll go to agenda item number four, which are public comments. Presenter is our Superintendent, Mr. Carlos S. González Junior.
Mr. Pérez, nobody signed up for public comments?
Thank you, Mr. González. Moving on to agenda item number five, Superintendent's Report. We will have two items presented. Subletter A is recognition of Roma ISDs, pardon me, award of the jobs in education for Texans, the JET grant, and subletter B is Roma ISD TEA Accountability 2025, a rating. So the presenter right will be District Superintendent, Mr. Carlos S. González Junior, who will make introductions.
Yes, at this time, for the JET grant introduction, will be Jaime, Mr. Jaime Escobar Junior.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, President of the Board, Mr. Pérez, and all Board members, trustees, members of the audience. I just would like to take this opportunity to just congratulate Roma ISD on receiving the first ever JET grant. On August 20th, we, Dr. Usman, RHS Principal, CT Specialist, Ana Sepúlveda, Head Counselor, Esteban Trevino, and myself, a CT Director, attended a special event at Texas Southmost College in Brownsville for a JET grant ceremony organized by the Texas Workforce Commission. And we received a JET grant, and we're one of five academic institutions to receive this. And I want to show the audience, I want to take the chance because I thought this was really cool. To show everybody the check that was presented to us. I've always dreamed of receiving this type of check. I just want to show everybody, again, it's not a personal check to me, it's to the district. And it's in the amount of $216,226. Of course, for some reason, the Texas Work, Work, Commission, Workforce Commission, took a whole year to do this award ceremony. This money was actually allocated to us last year, and we purchased a lot of equipment for our medical assistance programs, health sciences, and students going into health sciences careers. So we're very, very proud of that. I do want to take a spe, make a special note. How does this award, this JET grant, help to be, for us to become an A-rated school district? Well, it does not so much because of me or my staff or any of us, but when we apply and we receive these type of grants, our students are given the opportunity to get top-notch, state-of-the-art equipment that, that does embolden them and give them a better opportunity to work with hands-on equipment that is cutting-edge. So we're really proud. We, we purchased excellent equipment that are like simulators for medical situations. So it was a really awesome award, and we're really proud to have received it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Escobar. As Career and Technology Director, I know that it was a proud moment for, for your department to represent the school district in accepting this, this award. And like you said, I know that it took a whole year before they had the ceremony, and we had already used it or allocated a lot of that money. But we are very, very thankful and, and fortunate that we were one of the school districts that were... How many school districts, sir, were, were, five?
Either four school districts and one college.
So we were out of this region?
Yes.
Out of this region, so that is definitely something to be proud about. A lot of good things happening here for Roma ISD, and it has everything to do with the audience that is sitting right here in front of us. And our admins, we have the best, definitely the best employees anywhere, the best school district that bar none in the state of Texas. And we're showing off, and that's good. And we're very, very happy, very happy. So thank you very much, Mr. Escobar, for your presentation. Now...
Okay, Mr. Pérez, and now for the accountability rating, we have instructional specialist, Mr. Elias Pérez will be presenting.
Good evening, Board President Ricardo A. Pérez, members of the board, Superintendent González, and distinguished guests. What a great day it is in Gladiator Nation. I'm gonna repeat that, what a great day it is in Gladiator Nation. Before we get started with our district's accountability, we would like you to direct your attention to the data table presented. Before you, these are all the districts in Region 1. And you can clearly see Roma ISD is among the top three districts in Region 1. Again, let me repeat that, Roma ISD is among the top three districts in Region 1. And within our region, only eight districts out of 43 received an overall A rating. The Texas Accountability Ratings established by the Texas Education Agency served as a vital tool for evaluating the performance of school, districts, and campuses across the state. The rating system provides an A through F letter grade assigned annually to districts and campuses based on multiple measures, including student achievement, school progress, and efforts to close achievement gaps among diverse student populations. At this time, it is with great, great pleasure that we would like to take a moment and recognize the efforts of each individual campus for their outstanding academic achievement. We will start off with Florence J. Scott Elementary, led by Mrs. Diana Pérez. They have received a cumulative score of 95 out of 100, making it an A-rated campus. Mrs. Pérez? Mrs. Pérez and your team, can you please come up to get recognized? Next, Rafaela T. Barrera Elementary, led by Mrs. Marisa García. They have also received a cumulative score of 95, making it an A-rated campus. Congratulations. Next, we have Emma Vera Elementary, led by Mrs. Ibrun Guerrero. They have also received a cumulative score of 95, making it an A-rated campus as well.
Some might have to get on the stage. That's why I have to go out to the side. Like, the side will get everybody in there.
Okay, if you're on, I cannot see you, because I can't make sure, I don't have time to make sure. And so find a window, find a window. Okay, and one. One, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three.
Next, we have Roel Encelia R. Science Elementary, led by Mrs. Odette García. They have received a cumulative score of 95, also making it an A-rated campus. Next, we have Veterans Memorial Elementary, led by Mr. Oswaldo García. They have also received a cumulative score of 93, making it an A-rated campus. García. Next, we have Delia G. García Elementary, led by Mrs. Sitlali González. They have received a cumulative score of 95, making it an A-rated campus. At this time, we would like to recognize the Instructional and Guidance Center, led by Mrs. María Teresa Ramírez. ING Center does not receive an individual state accountability rating. However, they serve a critical function within our district and play an essential role in the academic success of our secondary schools. Mrs. Ramírez and your team, can you please come up to be recognized? Next, we have Roma Middle School led by Mr. Danilo Gonzalez. They have received a cumulative score of eighty-five, making it a B-rated campus. Mr. Gonzalez and your team, can you please come up to be recognized? Next, we have Ramiro Barrera Middle School led by Ms. Annette Garza. They have received a cumulative score of eighty-four, making it a B-rated campus. Ms. Garza, your team, please come up to be recognized. Lastly, we have Roma High School led by Dr. Jorge Guzman. They have received a cumulative score of ninety-two, making it an A-rated campus.
I'm gonna take over on this one test. So, at this time, we're gonna invite our instructional team, our curriculum team here from Central Office, and everybody else that's here from Central Office because they pay an important part of making sure that our kids are learning at high levels every single day. But, our curriculum department has really picked up the bar and we really do appreciate the work that they do. I don't think we'd be here, but it takes the principals, it takes the staff, it takes the students, and it takes the parents to make it work. But, we'd like to congratulate our curriculum team and everybody from Central Office that plays an important part of making sure our kids are getting educated every day. So, if the instructional team can be up, come up right now, Ms. Sanino's couldn't be here today. She had an appointment, but she's with us right now, right? Okay, so if everybody can please come up, especially the curriculum team.
This concludes our presentation. Congratulations to all. Job well done.
Thank you, Mr. Lee Esposito. On a little note here, we came in ranked third and we're tied with Raymondville ISD and Sherland ISD. I don't like to say that loud, right? And Sherland ISD, but I'll let you know this. We outscored them in our students at the meets level. And we outscored them at the masters level, so our kids are learning at high levels. I wanna thank you all for that. And we're the only district that didn't have a school get a C. All our schools are either an A or a B, and I don't think that's ever happened. Or that, as many As that we got this year. This is the first time the majority of our schools got As and we're doing very, very good because of the work you're doing. We have South Texas ISD, which they really don't count, right? Because they get the best of the best in the valley, pre-med, pre-engineering. That are ninety-four percent. So, our goal, our goal this year is to score a ninety-five. We won an off-Texas ISD off the top because Roma ISD is the best school district in the state of Texas. Today, we proved it because of the accomplishments you all did. Now, we gotta prove it even more. We step it up a notch. We got the wheel spinning. And the wheel is spinning, that means kids are learning every day, they're learning at high levels. We need to find that little extra. And our middle schools are getting close to that A. They're getting close to that A, and I think we're almost there. And if we work a little harder, we'll get there. And finally, we get to say, VME, three years ago, got an A, and they hadn't gotten one in a while. But, we couldn't give you the ratings because they hadn't been out. But, the past three years, they'd be an A school. VME has been an A school. So, they're getting up there, they're scoring high along with everybody else, and we wanna congratulate you and thank you from the bottom of our heart for the work that you do. If we continue working the way we work and being here for our students and being prepared for them every single day, the sky's the limit. And I honestly believe we can get a ninety-five. If our RLA in high school just takes it up another notch. If our CCMR scores are gonna go up a little bit, they are. And if we can just pick up the school, if the elementaries can maintain and the middle schools can pick it up another notch, maybe a point or two, we're at a ninety-five. And we just need to concentrate, and we need to focus, and we need to be ready for our kids every day. But, thank you all very much at the work you do, and I'll pass it on to Mr. Perez. Thank you all.
Well, it goes without saying that your diligence, your focus on teaching, and I'm directing this to our teachers and to our administrators. But, it goes without saying that all you have done has paid off. This may be a small town, a small border town, but it's making big waves across the state of Texas. We knew what we had here, all of us, we knew what we had here. And now, the rest of the state of Texas is beginning to hear it, they haven't already, where Roma ISD and Roma, Texas is on the map. And that is all because of your hard work and your dedication and your focus and your diligence. And I don't say those words just to say them, because you're here. You've proved it. We have the best students. These students that we have in our school district are second to none anywhere. And they can be compared to any school district, including South Texas ISD. And we're gonna show that we are gonna get there next year. And we talked about, Superintendent talked about, you know, our elementaries maintaining and our high school maintaining, and our middle schools working just a little bit harder to get where they wanna get. Well, we're not gonna maintain. We're gonna smash that record. We're going to do that because, not because I'm telling you, because that is exactly what you want. I don't think anybody here is satisfied. We're certainly happy. We're certainly very, very happy. And this is class to celebrate. Roma ISD should celebrate for the next three hundred and sixty-five days. Absolutely, every single day. This is, this is no small feat. You all have worked hard for this, and everybody should know. Everybody should know. So, when they come up to you from other school districts and they say where you're from, proudly, proudly say, you always do, but proudly say in a loud voice, Roma ISD, because Roma ISD is the place to be. Congratulations to all of you. Now, I'm gonna ask my colleagues if they would like to add any words of congratulations. We'll start off with Mr. Escobar on that side.
Yes, Mr. Perez. All I wanna say is congratulations and thank you. Excellent, excellent teamwork. I come from a background of athletics coaching, and it doesn't get any better than that. Excellent teamwork. Congratulations.
I just wanna say we're very, very happy with this huge accomplishment. The facts speak for themselves. You all have done a great job. Keep it up.
Definitely, Mr. Perez, Roma ISD is the place to be. And why? Because of all these people that are here. Congratulations to all. Your hard work, your dedication is greatly appreciated, and you make Roma ISD shine like usual. So, congratulations again.
I think I'll just echo a little bit about what my colleagues have said. Congratulations to everyone. Job well done. I couldn't be proud, more proud of you. As a parent, I see it with my children. It's your tremendous job, what you guys are doing. Thank you.
Again, congratulations to all of you. We have a great team here at Roma ISD, and it shows with its results. And I know that we'll continue with maintaining or excelling in our achievements. So, a big plus to all of you and congratulations again.
Mr. Perez, I just wanted to congratulate the leader of the leaders, Mr. Gonzalez, Carlos Gonzalez. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, as we have been reminded almost on a daily basis since he was hired. He is the best superintendent in the state of Texas. So, congratulations, Mr. Gonzalez.
We got the best teachers and the best administrators. That's why we're the best.
That's correct. It's a great team. We have one other special presentation. This goes under Agenda Item Number Six before I invite you all to either stay or to go. But, Agenda Item Number Six is Congressional Recognition from our Representative Henry Cuellar, our Congressman, of Roma ISD Police Officers' Heroism on Anniversary of the Shark Attack. If you all remember, this was not too long ago. And the Office of our Congressman now would like to recognize those individuals. And the presentation will be made by Mr. Robert Bassan, who is in charge of the local offices for Starcom.
Hello, everyone. I would like to, it's always great to be here in Roma. There's always great things going on here. I feel every time I'm here, you all are recognizing your staff and your campuses for another great achievement. So, I wanna thank Mr. Superintendent Gonzalez, Board President Perez, and the members of the board for allowing us to be here to recognize some of your police officers. And before I do so, I just wanna reiterate and congratulate all the campuses, all the teachers, staff, and school administrators for a tremendous job. This is really, truly something to be proud of, and it just is a testament of all the hard work that all your staff puts into impacting the students here in Roma ISD. And it's just great to see everything that's happening here in Roma, so congratulations on that. So, as President Perez mentioned, I'm here on behalf of US Congressman Henry Cuellar's office to present a congressional recognition to some of the Roma ISD police officers. Before I do so though, Officer Leroy Rivera, who couldn't be here with us today, had a letter that he would like for me to read on his behalf, if I could go ahead and do so now. Hello, everyone. My name is Officer Leroy Rivera. I regret that I couldn't be present for today's meeting, but it is truly an honor to hear that we are being recognized by Congressman Henry Cuellar on the first anniversary of the shark attack in South Padre Island. On behalf of my fellow officers and myself, we are deeply grateful for this recognition. This moment not only highlights the bravery and the quick actions taken that day, but also reminds us of the strength that comes from standing united in the face of danger. Today, we come together to remember and honor the courage, heroism, and selflessness displayed during the critical incident. We are proud of the resilience shown by everyone involved, and we hold close the memories of those affected. As Muhammad Ali once said, "He who is not courageous enough to take risks will accomplish nothing in life." That quote resonates deeply with all of us who stepped forward that day, not for recognition, but because it was the right thing to do. In conclusion, this recognition is not just for us as individuals, but for the spirit of service, sacrifice, and solidarity that defines our team. Let this honor serve as a reminder of what we can achieve when we act with courage and compassion. Thank you for standing with us and for recognizing the efforts that we will forever be in our hearts. Stay safe, and may we continue to protect and support one another today and always. Officer Leroy Rivera. I'll now go ahead and read the Congressional Recognition on behalf of US Congressman. After I read that, I will ask Officer Jaime Martinez, Officer Noe Flores, and Ms. Rosario Ramirez here on behalf of Officer Leroy Rivera to come up and accept the recognition. Ramirez here on behalf of Officer Leroy Rivera to come up and accept the recognitions. The recognition reads, "In honor of the one-year anniversary of your courageous actions, we recognize and commend your dedicated service shown through your response to a devastating shark attack during last year's Fourth of July festivities in South Padre Island. Through your quick response and lifesaving aid, you attended to two individuals that had been harmed. Your bravery and selflessness exemplify the very best of our law enforcement officers and serve as a powerful reminder of the challenges you face in service to our community. We extend our deepest gratitude for your actions that day and for your continued commitment to protecting and serving.
Thank you, Mr. Bassan, and please give our Congressman our thanks for this recognition. Ladies and gentlemen, we talk about our teachers, and we talk about our admins, and we talk about our students, but this is a total team. And the Roma ISD, Roma ISD Police Department is part of that team. They are a very important part of keeping our students as safe as possible. So Chief Ben Gutiérrez, thank you very much for being here. Thank you for everything that you do. Gentlemen, those of you that received, that were recognized, that is, thank you very much for everything that you did on that particular day. We're very proud of you, and we are very proud of the fact that Congressman Cuellar has recognized you today. So at this time, before we continue with the rest of this business meeting, I'm going to allow our audience to either remain with us, which you are more than welcome to do so, remain with us here. We have a very interesting and robust meeting, and you're welcome to stay and listen to us. Or you are welcome to begin your celebrations if you're going to have a bonfire or whatever it is that you're going to, well, be careful with bonfires, we might not be able to do that. But whatever you're going to have as far as celebrating, celebrate. Enjoy yourselves because you deserve it. Thank you for being here this evening. Mr. Heines Escobar knows all about bonfires.
What? Which one?
Junior, that is. Remaining in the building and have not left like Elvis, we will continue with the regular meeting. Actually, we're going to go to Agenda Item Number Seven, which is the public meeting to discuss the budget and proposed tax rate for 2025-2026. So at this time, I now recess the regular meeting. It is 6:51 PM, and I recess the regular meeting and open the public meeting to discuss budget and proposed tax rate for 2025-2026. Our presenter will be our District Executive Director of Business and Finance, Mr. Pedro Alanis.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You're going to point out the budget on the agenda.
This one here?
Yes. On page two, you have a budget summary.
Do you have a presentation also? For the audience? Maybe you want to, and then maybe turn off the lights or lower the... It's this one here.
It's the booklet, the booklet.
The budget revenue for next year, we're estimating it to be at $88,462,000.
Could you pick up your mic, please, a little bit?
Total revenues, $88,462,000. Expenditures by instruction is $51,058,000. Instructional resources immediate, $1,285,000. Total instructional expense, $51,058,000. Instructional support, $142,32,400. Administration, $2,000, I'm sorry, $2,651,000. District operations, $22,411,000. Other expenditures, $322,000. Total estimated expenditures, $90,874,500. Our end-of-fund balance is estimated to be at $27,861,000. On the next page, debt service, estimated revenue, $6,935,713. Expenditures, $6,937,806. It would give us an end-of-fund balance of $1,800. Then on page four, we have, and the expenditures in more detail. So total expenditures is $90,874,000. Page 11, we have the salary scale for teachers. The base salary is $51,000 for beginning teachers. Teachers would get, with one or two years' classroom experience, they get $1,500 raised. Three to four years' experience, $2,500. And teachers with over five years' classroom experience is $5,000. DRO teachers with over five years' experience, they're also getting $5,000. On page 12, we have the administrative impression, by pay grade, all administrators, professionals, and par-professionals will receive 2% from the midpoint, paying grade of 2%. Now, let's go, we have others that's typing, discussing in the budget workshops, and the increase by pay grades. On page 28, it discusses the proposed tax rate. The current tax year appraisal value for our property in the district is $2,410,473,000. New properties, $19,969,420. Taxable value of property, $972,516,81. And the taxable value for new properties is $12,364,640. The tax rates are going to go down. Last year's rate for MNO, it was .75 per valuation, and entering, oh, sorry, .4632. And this year, MNO is going to go down from .75 to .707, 70 cents per hundred-dollar valuation. And INS is going to go down from .46 cents to 45 cents per hundred-dollar valuation. The total projected tax rate for next year is going to be 1.1664. Local revenue per student, it's $1,276,000 per student. State revenue per student, $10,026,000. The average residence last year, the average market value was $88,939. This year is $101,77. The taxable value this year is $5,980. So at the $1.16, I'm sorry, 1.1664, the average tax on an average property is $69.25, which is a decrease of $38 from the previous year, $38.49. And the values submitted by the appraisal list.
So that $38 is an average?
The average, decreasing taxes. So this concludes the presentation.
The, on page 28, I'm looking at the comparison of proposed rates with last year's rates toward the middle of the page on local revenue per student. And so last, last year's rate was 1414, is that correct?
Correct. I thought, yeah, I thought 414 per student.
Okay. And then the rate to maintain same level of maintenance and operations revenue and pay the debt service was at 1,732, is that correct?
Correct.
So the proposed rate?
It's less, it's going to be $1,376, but that's the maximum rate that we can adopt for state.
Okay. But we had the increase in state.
Yes, we had the increase in state, correct.
From $10,000 to $12,000?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure, clear on that. Good. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Alanis regarding his presentation? Well, at this time, I have to ask, are there any comments from the public? Because this is, of course, a public meeting. So if there is any member of the audience that has any comments or any questions, this would be the time to, to ask. Thank you. If none, I will now close the public meeting. It is 7:00 PM, and we convene the monthly regular meeting. Thank you, Mr. Alanis.
Thank you.
We're going on to Agenda Item Number Eight, Regular Meeting. Consideration and Possible Action on Adoption of the 2025-2026 Budget. Our presenter is our District Executive Director of Business and Finance, Mr. Pedro Alanis. Mr. Alanis, your recommendation.
I would like to recommend the approval of the budget as presented.
Thank you, sir. All right, at this time, I would entertain a motion.
I shall move that we approve the budget as being presented for 2025-2026 school year.
Thank you, Mrs. Cruz. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? If none, there is a motion on the floor by Trustee Cruz, and seconded by Trustee Garza, to approve Agenda Item Number Eight as presented. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Six in favor, none opposed, one absent. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll go to Agenda Item Number Nine, Consideration and Possible Action on Adoption of the 2025-2026 Tax Rate and Accompanying Ordinance. Again, our presenter will be Mr. Alanis.
We would like to recommend the approval of the tax rate as presented.
Thank you, sir. I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget and proposed tax rate for 2025-2026.
I saw move to approve Agenda Item Number Nine as presented.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion? If none, there is a motion on the floor by Trustee Escobar, and seconded by Trustee Moscorra, to approve Agenda Item Number Nine as presented. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Six in favor, none opposed, one absent. Motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Ten, which is the Consent Agenda Items A through I. And presenters will be our District Executive Director of Business and Finance, Mr. Pedro Alanis, along with our District Tech and Pines Director, Mr. Manuel Garcia, to answer Any questions for Mr. Alanis? Thank you, Mr. Alanis. At this time, if any of you have any questions regarding the preliminary enrollment report that has been prepared by Mr. Manuel Garcia? Mr. Garcia, you're at the podium, and the podium is yours.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
You should have the preliminary numbers for, as of today. Our enrollment for the district stands at 5,953, compared to last year around the same time at 5,992. Difference of minus thirty-nine students compared about the same week to last year. So we're on track.
Pretty much.
We're looking at, yes.
Mr. Garcia, I noticed that the pre-K threes, it's increased by eight students, which is good. Which is good. And we have the touran officers making home visits to the foot.
Right now, we are doing the no-shows, getting our kids here.
Okay.
So the district as a whole is just giving our kids back on campus. None of us are doing home visits, but getting our kids back, making calls.
That's pretty much leveling out from, I think, a high that, if I'm not mistaken, we were, I think, the past ten years or so, the past fifteen years or so, our highest enrollment was close to seven thousand, right?
About sixty-five hundred.
Sixty-five hundred, right?
Was our highest.
Was the highest we've ever had, yeah. And it's pretty much leveled out.
Our projection back then was we're gonna level out at around six thousand, and then just plus-minus about fifty students was our projection back then. We, our enrollment pretty much depends on what happens in the community, in the area, obviously, right? So we hope for the best, but again, we're playing at six thousand, which is our goal.
Yes.
And budgeting plan accordingly.
Exactly.
There's two elementaries that have a difference of forty-some students. Has anybody called or where are those students from?
Well, it's a movement of students, man. We, let's say, we have a large fifth-grade class that left.
Yes.
And a smaller pre-K kinder, pre-K campus that comes in.
So that's why.
It's not necessarily students that are missing, it's just a larger number of kids graduating onto sixth grade and a smaller number coming in onto pre-K.
And we're expecting that fluctuation, that's what I'm saying.
That is correct, yes.
It's negotiable. But Mr. Garcia, any questions for Mr. Garcia? Well, Mr. Garcia, thank you very much, sir, for preparing this report, very detailed. And we look forward to further reports as we continue along with this academic year. Thank you for everything that you do, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, if there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve agenda item number ten, consent agenda items A through I.
I shall move that we approve the items under the consent agenda, items A through G as being, I as being presented.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? If none, there is a motion on the floor by trustee Cruz and seconded by trustee Garza to approve agenda item number ten as presented. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Six in favor, none opposed, one absent. Motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll go to agenda item number eleven, which is policy update number one-twenty-five. Our presenter will be our District Deputy Superintendent, Mr. Luis E. Garza. Mr. Garza, the floor is yours.
If seconded, I, okay, I forgot to abstain on the consent agenda, Mr. Luis.
Pardon me, if, I'm gonna go back because I didn't ask for any abstentions, but sir, just, you can remain there, it won't take long. I'm going to return to agenda item number ten. I failed to recognize any trustees for any abstentions to the motion.
I would like to abstain from agenda item number ten for Star Molding LLC, Garzenyo Builder Supply, and Flowers Baking Company.
Thank you, trustee Moscoro, and I apologize for not going there. Okay, so we've already voted on, that's all I'm going to, I think we'll just, I'll accept that the motion carries with six on. So at this time, we'll go, now we'll go to agenda item number eleven, policy update one-twenty-five. Mr. Garza.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. Good evening, Mr. President, trustees, Superintendent Gonzalez, and members of the audience. This evening, I am here to present an overview of proposed revisions to several local policies for consideration and approval. These changes clarify procedures aligned with state requirements and improve overall clarity. For your convenience, a copy of the policies has been placed on your desk for early, easy reference. I will be happy to entertain any questions as we go through the updates. Let's begin with the first policy. First policy, BDA local officers and officials duties and requirements of board officers. Updates clarify board officers duties. The sentence about the board assigning a staff member for clerical support was removed because the superintendent managed staff assignments and not the board. Clarifies that if the vice president becomes president due to a vacancy, they serve as president until the board reorganizes. This is policy BDA. BDB local, Board Internal Organization Board Committees. Clarifies the difference between board committees and advisory committees. Rename subtopic from internal committees to board committees. Explains how board committees are formed, the purpose, and how they can be dissolved. Special committees language was moved to BDF local. BDF local, Board Internal Organization Advisory Committees. New policy to align with changes in BDF local. Defines advisory committees, formerly citizen advisory committees. Explains formation, responsibilities, and how to dissolve advisory committees. The following policy is EI local, Academic Achievement. Changes clarify how partial credit is calculated. Replaces combined grades four with average up when a student passes only part of a course. FDE local, Admission School Safety Transfers. Adds Boolean as an offense for which the district must collect and maintain data. Aligns with state guidance on unsafe school options. FEC local, Attendance, Attendance for Credit. Revisions improve clarity throughout the policy. Administration rather than the board can establish attendance committees. Updates clarify awarding credit, final grades, and seat time requirements. References administrative regulations instead of dating, excuse me, detailing credit petitions. That concludes my presentation and update one-twenty-five. If there are, if there are no questions, this concludes my report. Thank you for your time and attention. Are there any questions over this update?
Any questions for Mr. Garza? Thank you, Mr. Garza. This is an action item, correct?
It is an action, please, sir.
I'll entertain a motion to add, revise, or delete local policies as offered by TASPI Policy Service as presented.
May I second?
I need a motion.
No, I thought you had written a motion.
I'll entertain a motion. Okay, you wanna, you wanna make the motion?
Yes.
Go ahead, sir.
All right, I recommend, I move that the board adds, revise, or deletes local policies as offered by TASPI Policy Service for consideration according to the instructions sheet for TASPI Local Policy Manual Update, one-twenty-five.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? If none, there is a motion on the floor by trustee Escobar and seconded by trustee Garza to approve agenda item number eleven as presented. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Six in favor, none opposed, one absent. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to agenda item number twelve, which is consideration, possible action on policy update affecting the following local policies. AE Educational Philosophy, EFB Instructional Resources Library Materials, FM Student Activities, FNCE Student Conduct, Personal Telecommunications, Electronic Devices. Mr. Garza?
Thank you, sir. For agenda item number twelve, I'll be presenting four local policies this evening. These policies are not part of update one-twenty-five, but TASPI provided a survey that led to recommended changes. And based on that feedback, TASPI has proposed revisions. I will review each policy briefly and provide an overview of the main updates. Trustees may ask questions at the end of each policy presentation or wait until all four policies have been reviewed. Policy AE Local, Educational Philosophy. This policy is not required to be included in the board book. We recommend deleting this policy because the district's mission, vision, goals, and core values are already included in the strategic plan, which is posted online and updated regularly. So we are recommended to delete this particular policy. Policy EFB Local, Instructional Resources Library Materials. Trustees, this policy changes is directly tied to Senate Bill thirteen, which requires additional transparency in library and instructional materials. TASPI has recommended updates to ensure the district is in compliance with this new state law. Recent for proposed revisions. To ensure transparency and give parents a clear opportunity to review all the instructional materials, including donated books. Parental Review. Parents can review all library materials and instructional resources before they are used. Approval Process. All materials, including donated books, must be posted online and approved by the school board prior to purchase or distribution. Challenging Materials. Parents have the right to formally challenge materials they believe are inappropriate or unsuitable for students. Transparency. Ensures clear communications to parents about what materials are available in the library and classrooms. So this policy has major, major changes. Policy FM, Student Activities. Reasons for Proposed Change. TASPI is proposing a change because many students participate in multiple extracurricular activities, which can make it difficult to stay within the current absence limits. For example, a student may be involved in band, marching band, sports, academic competition, and UIL events throughout the year. This multiple commitment can cause students to exceed the current maximum absences. The current absence limits are as follows. Up to ten absences for activities not related to post-district competition. Up to five absences for post-district competitions before state. Up to two absences for state competition. TASPI has presented two options for the board to consider, and I'm gonna go over these two options. You are gonna select either option one or option two. Option one, set a maximum number of extracurricular absences, for example, ten, twenty, or thirty days for activities not related to post-district competition. Option number two, do not set a limit on the number of absences for extracurricular activities. The board is asked to decide which option they prefer. Administration can provide input if requested. The last policy. Policy FNCE, Personal Communication Devices. At the beginning of the school year, the board approved allowing students to have personal communication devices with certain restrictions and approved consequences for misuse. TASPI updated the policy to clearly include the same rules and consequences for personal communication devices as outlined in the Student Code of Conduct. This concludes my presentation on these four local policies. If there are no questions, this concludes my report. Thank you for your time and attention. Are there any questions over these four policies?
Mr. Garza, on the student activities, FM?
Yes, sir.
Are you, is the district making a recommendation of the two options?
I spoke with the TASPI representative, and she stated that the majority of the schools are selecting not even a specific number.
Which would be option two?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But it's up to you, you want, right now, we have, as I read, ten, but you can go with twenty, you can go with thirty, you can go with forty.
Sure.
Or no, no, set numbers.
Okay, so that would be option two?
That is correct.
Okay, just wanna make sure. And on the FNCE with the electronic devices and telecommunications, after the first week and a few days, any, any reports, anyhow, how is it going?
Good question, President Perez. I suspected you were gonna ask, or one of you were gonna ask me that specific question. So what I did yesterday and today, I called numerous principals, especially the secondary principals, high school principal, two, the two middle school principals, and also one or two elementary principals. What they stated was very minimum issues, minimum issues, and the students were very cooperative. They knew that they were, by accident, they had the phone on, they gave it to the principal. But I'm quoting what Dr. Wusman stated. We have excellent students at Roma ISD, we have very, we had very minimum, very minimum issues. So I forecast that you were gonna ask me that question, sir, so.
I've had a couple of comments by parents made, and I really mean a couple, just two, so it's not, I don't have a, I wouldn't say it's a general feeling, but if it's, if those two are indicative of the remainder of our, of our parents throughout our district, they're pretty much in favor of this, and they said it's been a long time coming. So they, and they said it in various ways, but the only concern by one was that she's the parent of a senior and has to pick up the student early before, before regular dismissal. And so sometimes, she was used to sending a message and saying that she was waiting outside her, so now she's gotta adjust it a bit, but that was it. Not anything that was really out of the ordinary.
I think it is fair, Mr. Perez, for me to say that Mr. John Mireles, his president here, he stopped by my office, we had a long conversation in reference to this particular issue. And he asked me, Mr. Garza, is it possible during the marching period, we have, they have the marching area, they have the dots, they have a particular app, they have a particular app that when the, when the students, they move, let's say, two feet to the front, one to the left, well, that particular app gives the specific spot where they can land, where they can stop. Is it possible for us to use that particular, the phones during that time, only during the time that we're marching?
Well, it's an instructional, I wouldn't see a problem.
I contacted TASPI, and her response from the TASPI, things like that, when the, when the individual is asking, basically, the instructor is the one that is asking for instruction, we, I mean, you can be flexible. You can be flexible in doing that, but it is for instruction. If you have an AP class and it requires that you have to log into, ask for a particular lesson, maybe through the university. In that particular case, what they recommend is that that teacher reports this to the administration and say during this time, during this particular period, I have to use this personal communication devices, will you give me permission to do that?
And the Chromebooks, and the Chromebooks that we offer the students, they don't, they don't have that particular service?
Was that?
The Chromebooks, the?
Yes, yes. The good thing is that I asked Mr. Gonzalez at the middle school, and he said, sir, I don't have any problem because every one of my students, they have personal, personal, I mean, not personal, but the school districts.
Yes, the Chromebook.
Exactly, so he said, we don't- Exactly, so he said, "We don't have, we don't have to ask permission." What this lady mentioned from TASPI is that if, let's assume that few students do not have those, those devices, and she was, she was speaking in general due to the fact that maybe some school districts do not provide Chromebooks that, the way we do. So, in this particular case, if everyone has those Chromebooks, then they don't have to use their personal devices. So, in certain occasions, sir, with the permission of the administration, and of course, with the request of a certain, you know, teachers like John Mireles, they're allowed to use it for instruction. And he assured me that this was gonna be used only during that time, and even if they were gonna have a little break to go drink water or whatever, they were not gonna use that for me. He assured me of that, so, and I said, "Let me look into it." I looked into it, and it is acceptable to...
So, it's permissible?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions that my colleagues might have for Mr. Garza regarding this Agenda Item? So, on the, on the motion for this action item, we have to also indicate the option?
That is correct.
That's correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
I mean, one thing that you can say is that, you can make a motion saying that we approve this for policies as presented, but for that particular policy, pinpoint that you want Option Number Two.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
All right, if there are no further questions for Mr. Garza, then I'll entertain a motion for Agenda Item Number Twelve.
Yes.
On FM Local?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we, that we approve Agenda Item Number Twelve. Policy AE as presented, EFB as presented, and FNCE as presented. FM, we, with Option Two.
Student Activities, okay, thank you, sir. Is there a second to this motion?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? If none, there's a motion on the floor by Trustee Escobar, and seconded by Trustee Cruz to approve Agenda Item Number Twelve. That includes Option Number Two for, for Item FM, Student Activities. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Six in favor, none opposed, one absent, motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll go on to Agenda Item Number Thirteen. Discussion and Consideration to Take Possible Action to Approve an Inter-local Agreement with the City of Roma for the Provision of School Resource Officer Services and to Authorize District Administration to Finalize the Agreement with the City of Roma, including any necessary revisions. Mr. Luis Garza, you are still at the podium.
Thank you, sir. I'm respectfully requesting approval of the agreement between the City of Roma and Roma ISD, which was drafted by our school attorneys. This agreement will replace the previous Memorandum of Understanding School Safety Task Force, which was presented last year by Mr. Alanis. The following are key points of the update, updated agreement. Compliance with Chapter Seven Ninety-One of the Government Code and Texas Education Code Thirty-Sixpoint Zero Eighty-One clearly defines roles of responsibilities of the City of Roma officers serving as school resource officers, compensation, reporting times, and supervision. I respectfully request that the Board approves this agreement and authorize the district administration to finalize it, including any necessary revisions with the City of Roma. If there are no questions, this concludes my presentation for this particular item.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. Does, do any of my colleagues have any questions for Mr. Garza regarding this Agenda Item?
If I may, Mr. Perez, it was Friday when the Board Book was sent to you all, and the attorney had drafted a particular, I mean, this particular agreement between Roma ISD and the city. And I requested, I asked for you all for, for provide, you know, to provide me input, you know, after reading this particular agreement.
Chief Garza?
Chief Garza made some comments, asked some questions in reference to two particular items. I addressed this with the attorney, and we modified what is in the Board Book, but if you look at the one that I presented there, it's, you know, it's revised and it is in red letters. So, if you're gonna make a motion, I will highly recommend for you to say that it's the one that I provided you this afternoon. And of course, this is nothing new to you because I provided you this, you know, basically, and explaining as to why, you know, we made those changes.
Yes, sir, thank you very much. Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Thirteen as presented.
I did place a motion, yes, I would highly recommend for you to consider reading that.
I move that the Board approve the inter-local agreement with the City of Roma for the Provision of School Resource Officer Services and authorize the superintendent to conduct final negotiations and to finalize and execute the agreement, including revisions within the superintendent's administrative authority that do not affect the district's budget.
Thank you, Trustee Mascorro. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? If none, there is a motion on the floor by Trustee Mascorro, and seconded by Trustee Rios to approve Agenda Item Number Thirteen as presented. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Six in favor, none opposed, one absent, motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Fourteen. Discussion and Consideration to Take Possible Action to Approve a Memorandum of Understanding with the City of Roma, City of Escobades, and Starr County regarding communication and coordination between law enforcement agencies with overlapping jurisdiction and to authorize district administration to finalize the agreement with the City of Roma, City of Escobades, and Starr County, including any necessary revisions. Mr. Garza?
Thank you, Mr. Perez. The purpose of this resolution, and we bring this resolution every year, is requesting approval for three MOUs with local law enforcement agencies to address coordination requirements under Texas Education Code Thirty-Sixpoint Zero Eighty-One G and ensure proper communications and collaborations with agencies that have overlapping jurisdiction with Roma ISD. These three MOUs include City of Roma, City of Escobades, and Starr County. These MOUs do not provide SOR, which are the, the School Resource Officers Services. They document, they document reasonable efforts to coordinate with other local law enforcement entities as required by law. At this time, I respectfully request that the Board approve the MOUs and grant district administration the authority to finalize them, including any needed revisions in coordinations with the City of Roma, City of Escobades, and Starr County. Once completed, the MOUs will be submitted to all three entities for their review and approval. If you don't have any questions, this concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Fourteen as presented.
I move that the Board approve the Memorandum of Understanding with the City of Roma, City of Escobades, and Starr County regarding communication and coordination between law enforcement agencies with overlapping jurisdiction and authorize the superintendent to conduct final negotiations and to finalize and execute the agreement with each entity, including revisions within the superintendent's administrative authority that do not affect the district's budget.
Thank you, Mrs. Cruz, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? If none, there is a motion on the floor by Trustee Cruz, and seconded by Trustee Escobar to approve Agenda Item Number Fourteen as presented. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Six in favor, none opposed, one absent, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, trustees.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. Agenda Item Number Fifteen. The Roma High School Band is requesting permission to travel to Florida from May the fourteenth to May the nineteenth of twenty twenty-six. Presented will be our district performing arts director, Mr. Daniel Renteria. Mr. Renteria, you got the call.
Good evening, Board President Perez, members of the Board, and Superintendent Gonzalez. The Roma High School Band is requesting permission to travel to Florida during the month of May. I did attach a letter on Board Book on behalf of Mr. Mireles with more details.
Mr. Mireles, would you like to make any comments here regarding the, what this trip is all about? If you'd like to come forward, please. I know you have a prepared script or so, no pressure. Ladies and gentlemen, our head band director, Mr. John Mireles.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, I'll just read what you have there. "On behalf of the Roma High School Gladiator Band, I would like to request approval for a performance trip to Disney World and Universal Studios on May fourteenth through the nineteenth of twenty twenty-six. This trip will include two days in Disney Parks, two days in Universal Parks, where students will either participate in recording studio performance or they will have the opportunity to march in the night parade at Disney. As students sign up and instrumentation becomes more evident, we will make a decision regards to the event in which they will participate. The trip has been a tradition every four years since two thousand fourteen, giving each generation of band students the opportunity to take part. Students and families will cover their costs through fundraising and payments that will happen throughout the year. Again, there will be monthly opportunities for students to fundraise for each payment. This fee includes meals in Orlando, charter bus transportation, lodging, and theme park tickets. There will be payments due by the end of the month, again, of September through November, leaving out December for Christmas, and will begin again January through April. Again, there will be monthly opportunities for students to fundraise for each payment. Currently, there is a minimum ratio of one teacher to every twenty-five students. We respectfully ask for the Board's approval to move forward with planning this exciting opportunity for our band kids."
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Mireles?
Yes, hello, Mr. Mireles. I'm glad that you're feeling better. I heard you went through some hard times. Sir, is this, how much money do you think you're going to need, more or less?
So, so, from, from the school district, again, this is going to be something that's fundraised by students and families.
But what, what are you looking at?
So, what we're looking at is, we're just looking for an opportunity to go. And so, in the past, this has all been taken care of through, through student fundraising.
Okay, but do they raise what, fifty thousand, a hundred thousand? That's what I'm getting to?
So, for every student individually, so every student individually, there's an approximate number right now. It's just depending upon this meeting right now. I didn't wanna go forward to saying that we're gonna do it and, and have anything a hundred percent solidified. It's already in a place where we can. However, we're looking at around a thousand five hundred per student.
Per student, to cover the cost. It's never been a hardship, it's always been within their means for all the students to raise that amount?
It's, it's certainly a hardship for some families, and some families do go above and beyond to get their kiddos to go to this.
But it's something they want.
Sure.
Thank you.
Of course, you have, you have the parent boosters also that help out with that. The concessions stand at football, for the football games, right?
Correct.
So, there's a lot of opportunities for the, the, those students that might, might have difficulty to be able to offset their expenses as well. I think this is a very worthwhile, personally, I think this is a very worthwhile trip for the band, and an excellent experience for our students, and definitely a fine opportunity to rub elbows with Mickey Mouse and Donald Duck. So, thank you, Mr. Renteria, for your comments. Thank you, Mr. Mireles, also for yours, presentation. And at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Fifteen as presented.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? If none, there's a motion on the floor by Trustee Garza, and seconded by Trustee Mascorro to approve Agenda Item Number Fifteen, giving the Roma High School Band permission to travel to Florida from May fourteenth to May nineteenth, twenty twenty-six. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Six in favor, none opposed, one absent, motion carries. Mr. Mireles, start making, start making your plans. Okay. Agenda Item Number Sixteen, I've been informed by the superintendent, we are going to table this item, that is correct, to the next, the next meeting. So, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Seventeen. Consideration Possible Action to Approve Renewal of the District's Bank Depository Contract for a two-year term from September one, twenty twenty-five, through August thirty-one, twenty twenty-seven. Presented will be our district's Executive Director of Business and Finance, Mr. Pedro Alanis. Mr. Alanis?
Yes, we would like to request approval for the renewal of the district's bank depository contract with Lone Star National Bank for an original two-year period from September first, twenty twenty-five, through August twenty-first, twenty twenty-seven. The current contract is set to expire at the end of August twenty twenty-five. Lone Star National Bank has provided consistent and excellent banking services under the existing contract and for the past twenty years. The proposed renewal is in line with the terms of the original agreement and state requirements. I would like to recommend the approval of the renewal.
Thank you, Mr. Alanis. So, any questions for Mr. Alanis regarding this Agenda Item and his recommendation? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve renewal of the district's bank depository contract for a two-year term from September first, twenty twenty-five, through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven, with Lone Star National Bank.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? If none, pardon me, if none, there is a motion on the floor by Trustee Mascorro, and seconded by Trustee Rios to approve Agenda Item Number Seventeen as presented. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Six in favor, none opposed, one absent, motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Eighteen. Consideration Possible Action to Purchase Age of Learning Math and Reading Academy Site Licenses for Grades Pre-K Through Three at our elementary schools. Our district Executive Director for Business and Finance, Mr. Alanis, you will...
Yes, we would like to recommend approving the purchase of site licenses for the...
Mr. Alanis, can I interrupt? Mr. Chapa, and ladies, thank you for being with us here this evening?
Thank you.
We'll see you later. Go ahead, sir.
We would like to recommend approving the purchase of the site licenses for the Age of Learning Math and Reading Academy for our Pre-K Three through kindergarten students. This program provides personalized standards aligned instruction in early literacy and math. It is designed specifically for young learners with an engaging adaptive platform that supports both independent learning and teacher-guided instruction. By implementing it across all of our elementary campuses, we ensure every learner has access to the same high-quality tools that help build strong academic foundations. The total cost is fifty thousand dollars, and it will be covered by EMAT funds.
By what funds?
EMAT.
Okay.
And the license includes all necessary training and support. The Curriculum Department recommends the approval of this purchase.
It's not a renewal, it's, it's the first time?
The first time, yes.
Pedro, on the, on page one, I guess, assessed total on list total of one fifty-nine, but on the total, it just says sixty.
Yeah, it's like a discount.
A discount, okay. Not that, there are no balance after, okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Alanis regarding this item? Thank you. So, at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I shall move that we approve the purchase of Age of Learning Math and Reading Academy Site Licenses for Grades Pre-K Three through Kinder at our elementary schools.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? If none, there is a motion on the floor by Trustee Cruz, and seconded by Trustee Garza to approve Agenda Item Number Eighteen as presented. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Six in favor, none opposed, one absent, motion carries. Thank you. We'll go to Agenda Item Number Nineteen. Consideration Possible Action to Renew the District's Unemployment Compensation Insurance for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. Mr. Alanis?
We would like to recommend the approval of the renewal of the district unemployment compensation insurance with the TASPI Risk Management Fund for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year. The program helps the district manage and pay unemployment claims in a way that is both financially responsible and legally compliant. The renewal premium for twenty-five, twenty-six is fifty thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars. Last year, it was sixty thousand, sixty, sixty-one, so it's a little decrease from the previous year. We recommend...
We recommend the approval of this.
Approval, okay. Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Alanis regarding this item? Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
To approve, okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If none, there is a motion on the floor by trustee Garza and seconded by trustee Escobar to approve Agenda Item Number 19 as presented. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Six in favor, none opposed, one absent. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll go to Agenda Item Number 20, consideration possible action to approve budget amendment number two. Mr. Alanis?
Yes, for this budget amendment number two, the main reason for the amendment is we need to record part of the TRS expenses that is, it's paid by the, by, by TRS, but we need to record the expense and the, and the revenue. So we're not going to pay from, from district fund, but we need to record the expense and, as well as the revenue. So, so most of the, we need to record, like, instruction and, and other functions, it's an additional expense, but we're getting money from the state.
Okay. And, and is this necessary each year?
Yes, it, it started back in 2023, so it's an additional, it's recorded by the state that we need to record that part of the expense. Is that Medicare part of the expense?
So in other words, to, to record all of that as required by the state, we, we, we go through this route, a budget amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
And then in, in plant maintenance, there's a additional expenses that we've had in the past two, two months, mainly with age-back systems.
Yes.
We have to replace a lot of our age-back systems. A lot of the systems are getting obsolete. We need to, maybe in the near future, come up with a plan to fix all the, our infrastructure, mainly the age-back.
I, which brings to mind one of our Region One districts who is about to put to voters, ask the voters to approve a $425 million bond issue, just to upgrade existing infrastructure in their school districts. When I think of our last bond, you know, and I, I see that. Wow. That's a.
In this past year, we've been doing it, the district, we've been paying all the these repairs.
Yes.
But it's getting costly.
Well.
But overall, this, the revenues, additional revenues is $130,000, and additional expenditure is $125,500, which is a $75,000 difference. That's the amount that we're gonna get from the, from the amendment, $25,500 net difference.
Sure.
So the only difference against it's just $75,500?
Yes.
Okay. And that has to do with the TRS, MEDD?
Yes.
Okay, adjustments.
Mainly that's the main.
Okay.
And the infrastructure and the maintenance. And I would recommend the approval of the amendment.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Alanis regarding this item? Thank you, Mr. Alanis. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve Agenda Number 20 to the budget amendment number two as presented.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? If none, there is a motion on the floor by trustee Rios and seconded by trustee Garza to approve Agenda Item Number 20 as presented. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Six in favor, none opposed, one absent. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll go to Agenda Item Number 21, consideration possible action to purchase 150 Chromebooks, that's why I remembered, for Roma High School to be used for testing.
Yes, sir. We would like to recommend the purchase of these 150 Chromebooks for the Roma High School. This will help ensure our students are fully equipped for state and district record testing. The cost per Chromebook is $238, plus $29.95 for an upgrade, and $20.50 for the case. The total cost of the 150 Chromebooks with the case and, and upgrade is $43,267.50. It will be funded by EMAT, and we're gonna be using that face purchasing cooperative.
Okay. So that's funded, all right.
Is that, is that what they're recommending, just 150, being the fact that now there's a lot of testing electronically?
Yes, we've been replacing, during the year, we've been replacing Chromebooks, and, and we might need to come up with more Chromebooks.
More Chromebooks, with the same funding source?
Yes.
Why, why not approve? 50 more or 100 more?
But since we, in the agenda item.
So these 150 is just to replace, or you're having some surplus for some other ones kind of get banged?
Yeah, so coming in here, replacements and, and new ones.
Okay.
And new ones. And we're gonna need more.
You'll, you'll ask for it later?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll just leave it at this, and then if we need more, we'll come back.
Yeah, we'll come back.
We need to be careful with the money that we're using. It could get into further resources.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Alanis? Thank you, sir. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I shall move that we give approval to purchase 150 Chromebooks for Roma High School and to be used for testing.
Thank you, Mrs. Cruz. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion? If none, there is a motion on the floor by trustee Cruz and seconded by trustee Mascorro to approve Agenda Item Number 21 as presented. All those in favor of the item, rather, the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Six in favor, none opposed, one absent. Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda Item Number 22, consideration possible action to approve renewal of Summit K through 12 for use at elementary and middle school campuses. Mr. Alanis?
Yes, sir. We are requesting your approval to renew Summit K 12. It's an online academic support platform currently in use at our elementary and middle school campuses. Summit K 12 supports English learners and other at-risk students by providing targeted instruction and practice in reading and writing. It also supports STAR and TELPAS readiness and interactive, engaging, and standards-aligned content. Our data from the past year shows measurable gains in language proficiency and academic performance, especially for students in bilingual and ESL programs. Teachers find the platform easy to integrate, and students benefit from personalized instruction and practice. The total cost for the renewal is $64,645, and it's gonna be funded, if approved, by, by EMAT funds. And we're gonna be using the purchasing co-op by board. We recommend, the, the, the curriculum department recommends.
To approve this? Okay. Thank you, sir. Any other questions for Mr. Alanis? If none, then I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 22 as presented.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If none, there is a motion on the floor by trustee Mascorro and seconded by trustee Garza. Am I correct?
Yes.
Escobar.
Oh, it was Mr. Escobar. Excuse me, sir. I looked this way and I didn't see that. All right. Seconded by trustee Escobar to approve Agenda Item Number 22 as presented. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Six in favor, none opposed, one absent. Motion carries. Thank you. We're gonna go to Agenda Item Number 23, which is closed session. Texas Government Code 551.071 and 551.072, deliberations with legal counsel regarding the proposed purchase of a 0.1447 acre, which equals to 6,304.68 square feet track of land, more or less, with improvements being out of Lot 7, Block 35, and original townsite of Roma Star County, according to the map or plat thereof, recorded in Volume 2, pages 223-A and 223-B. Map records Star County, Texas, and related issues. The time is now 7:53 PM, and the Roma Independent School District Board of Trustees will go into closed session as authorized by the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 551.071, 551.072, to discuss Agenda Item Number 23. No action will be taken in closed session. We respectfully request that our Roma ISD community in attendance please wait in the Manuel Guerra Building while the board is in closed session. The board is now in closed session. And Roma ISD police, lock all doors, do not let anybody in.